That's okay, so we're gonna get you guys caught up tonight. One thing I really noticed with grad pathways is these kids really want to graduate. And so when they're here, they're really focused. And they've got a lot of things going on outside of of school, which is why they're, you know, coming and working with us. But they do just a fantastic job of of getting things done because they have this goal that's so close and they just have this little bit left to do.
I mean, I was kind of struggling in normal school. And this is a lot easier for me, like just coming in and having them help me out and like it's just been kind of a lot easier on me, honestly, because it works around like my work and like personal life and everything like that. And also I could do this to help graduate early, too.
It's just a another option, I think, for kids because some kids have to work. You know, some kids have it's working, it's maybe anxiety just about being in the bigger schools and it's a smaller, more, I guess, intimate environment.
With this, it really motivated me because they told me, well, you can graduate when you're like, if you put in the work to graduate, you can graduate early. So that's really motivated me to do all my work.
At maybe like the current time, it may be like not that big a deal. But later on down the road, I think it's it's very beneficial, especially like in workplaces if they want to try to move up to either like assistant manager, manager role. It's a great save, like, hey, I have my high school diploma. I went through this, I went through this, maybe challenged to overcome it. And this is what can put me in a leadership role.
It's been really fun to like find new ways that we can find to help some of them out. This year, we added some independent study classes. So last fall, because of the pandemic, I filmed a lot of things from some of my classes. And so we were able to put those into independent study classes on classroom so that the kids can get more than they would get just from reading a story themselves or something like that. They can get the extra instruction that comes with that.
I feel pretty lucky, like, kind of blessed, honestly, because my mom was super worried about me having to do another year and everything and pushing back like college and because I'm about to join the military here soon. So I was gonna have to delay that just to do school. But with this, I'm able to complete everything.
I think it's just it's more connection. And I think it's them, it's a constant reminder, but also a connection that we're here for them. It's a it's a support that we have. So, you know, whether they need outside of school support or even support with their schoolwork, it's just that we're here for you. We're here to support you in any way that we can.
Every semester, there's more kids, there are more classes offered, there are more people here in the evenings, which is really exciting to see these kids who kind of feel hopeless when it comes to, you know, the possibility of graduating, see them find an option that works for them.
Do it, just take the class, talk to your counselor or admin. Because like I said, I really thought I was gonna have to do another year, but I'm about to graduate already, so.
Meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for March 23rd to order. Ms. Maxwell, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Munkard?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here, here.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted between the two doors on the wall, according to law. You have before you the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they stand approved as posted and printed. Tonight, we have two staff celebrations. Our first staff celebration is Mr. Don Mayhew. Would you please go to the podium and call your guest?
Yep, I would ask Lance Nielsen to join me at the podium. My dear board colleagues, in high school, I was a choir geek. And our music programs are very near and dear to my heart. So it was with incredible pleasure that I introduce the following as a motion. Whereas the Nebraska State Bandmasters Association has honored Lincoln Public Schools Supervisor of Music Lance Nielsen with its 2021 Outstanding Administrator Award. And whereas Lance Nielsen has dedicated the last 30 years of his career to music education. And whereas Lance Nielsen has been a tireless advocate and leader for the music programs at Lincoln Public Schools. And whereas Lance Nielsen is dedicated to providing music teachers the resources and support they need. And whereas Lance Nielsen understands the lifelong impact that music education can have on students, now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Lance Nielsen for winning the 2021 Outstanding Administrator Award from the Nebraska State Bandmasters Association. Signed, Board President Kathy Danick and Superintendent Stephen Joel. And I have this proclamation and also this award that I will leave here for you. Lance, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much for this recognition. And I also want to thank everybody on the executive team and Dr. Tukak Olson, Director of Instruction, for all their support of music education. You know, if you think about it, a little over a year ago, when COVID-19 first started to appear, the first major outbreak was a church choir. And that just created a sense of panic and worrisome in the music community, will we ever be able to sing, will we be able to play instruments again? And we found a way to do it. We've done it safely. We've been able to keep music education as a part of our curriculum, which is so important. We haven't been able to do everything that we normally would like to do in in a year, but we're hoping by next fall, we will. And I really think we're gonna have a renaissance of the arts once this is over because we know that the arts is just a way for that human expression. I also want to take some time to recognize our 126 music teachers that have just done tireless work this year. They're dedicated, they're passionate for their students. And one of the unique things about a music teacher is that they get to be with those students, not just for one school year, but for multiple school years, sometimes four, sometimes six years. And they get to see those students grow and develop. And we were with them before the pandemic, we were there through the pandemic, will be there past the pandemic. And you talk about the social emotional learning piece, there it is right there. And you see them making those connections with students every single day. And so I applaud them. I am very honored to be in a position where I get to support and serve their efforts every single day. So I'm very excited about that. So I want to thank all those music teachers. And then the the people that nominated RJ Matier from Southeast, Nolan Schmidt and Zach Brown, who are attendants, and Mary Faulner were kind of the four that really spearheaded, I guess, my nomination. So I want to tell them thank you as well. I want to introduce my my husband, Victor, who's here tonight. Very excited he could be here. And he's been very supportive all the way through this. In fact, a year ago, when we were moving all of our offices home, he kept reminding me, just because your office is at home, doesn't mean you have to be in it 24/7. He kept me on the right track. So again, thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you very much.
Lanny?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resolution honoring Lance Nielsen, Lincoln Public Schools Director of Music, for his award by the Nebraska State Bandmasters Association. Is there any discussion?
Great idea.
Seeing none, Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Munkard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. And we have another celebration of success honoring the Coosier Elementary School Librarian, Betsy Thomas. And Ms. Duncan, would you please?
And Betsy, will you join me at the podium, please?
Betsy has a better job than you. She gets to see my grandkids every day.
Well, from one spirited person, or that's what my mother always called me, to another, congratulations. I have watched this one. She entertained me during COVID, so thank you. Okay, let me take this off. Board, this comes to you in the form of a motion. Whereas the Nebraska State Literacy Association honored Coosier Elementary School Librarian Betsy Thomas with the 2021 Distinguished Educator Award. And whereas Betsy Thomas went above and beyond to keep students engaged and entertained during remote learning in the spring of 2020. And whereas Betsy Thomas's creative teaching methods drew national praise. And whereas Betsy Thomas works every day to instill a love of literature in her students. And whereas Betsy Thomas is widely respected among her colleagues for her dedication, innovation, and creativity, now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Betsy Thomas for winning the 2021 Distinguished Educator Award from the Nebraska State Literacy Association. Signed, Kathy Danick, President of the School Board, and Dr. Steve Joel, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm very honored to receive this recognition. I'd like to take a moment to introduce some of my guests here tonight. First, I want to thank my parents for coming. When I was a kid, they always found time to read to me and foster the love of reading. My brother, who is really the real performer, and our family as a singer and performer. I had to really, you know, try and channel him during some of my videos. And then my very understanding husband, who for the past year has been living in a constant state of green screen, ring lights, costumes, props, taking over our house. And he has also generously basically given up almost all the closet space in our house to my clothes and my costume collection. And he recently agreed to help me paint a whole wall in our basement green, so there will be more videos to come. So tonight, at the end of school, we did have a staff meeting. And my principal, Ange Blonsky, told the staff that I would be here tonight. And of course, they all wanted to know what costume I was wearing. So are you ready to hear about how being a librarian has changed over this year? Exactly one year ago today, the Learning Challenges premiered on the Lincoln Public School site with a Pirate Day. My leader, Chris Hefner, and her team of the Library Media Services came up with what I thought was a brilliant idea to make sure that we were still able to serve our students, even though we didn't have them in person and in front of us in our libraries. The library service team did not skip a beat. In less than a week, the daily learning challenges were up and running, and there were new and fun and engaging themes every day. I also feel very blessed to work with what I think is one of the best library teams in the country. When we started our daily learning challenges, I was inspired by the creativity and passion of my fellow librarians across our district. It was so exciting to work with such dedicated and passionate group of people. I was, I truly feel like I work with some of the best in the business, and I felt like I was such a small piece of this amazing thing that our library team created together. Not only did I get support from our district level, but my principal, and she also calls herself my agent, Ange Blonsky, and my Coosier team, supported and promoted the daily learning challenges during our time off, well, not time off, but when our kids were learning from home. And when we came back this fall, librarians and all specialists were teaching in their classrooms, and they welcomed welcomed us into our classrooms, their classrooms, and let us teach in there. And I also could not have done my job without my para, who was my lifeline throughout this all. They always say that teamwork makes the dream work, and my staff at Coosier Elementary embodies that every day. I finally want to thank you, the board, and our administration. Without you and your support, our library program would not be what it is. I appreciate that our district ensures that all of our schools have at least a part-time, qualified, highly qualified, I should say, librarian in it. Also, through your support, we're able to offer so many amazing resources to our students and staff. Our online databases provide eBooks and reliable sites that were literally at our students' fingertips when we were not in school. We weren't able to physically serve them with books, but they were able to log in through their Chromebooks and other devices at home and keep reading. So hopefully, you'll keep supporting that. Otherwise, I might have to make you walk the plank. I am very honored and humbled to be representing the librarians of the Lincoln Public Schools, and I am accepting this in honor of them.
Thank you, Betsy. You bring such joy to the kids that you serve. Is there a second? Annie?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Munkard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Our next item is item 6.3. It is the Pandemic Plan: Procedures in Action If Needed, Update. Dr. Joel?
Thank you, Mrs. Danick. Let me start by saying I don't have any major announcements to make tonight for a change. So, you know, we're, we're back from spring break, we're in good shape. And, you know, I, I'll just report on just some of the things that are happening. First of all, our staff have been vaccinated. And, you know, I know that they're very appreciative of that. And I want to again thank the Lincoln Lancaster Health Department for doing what they needed to do to make that happen as quickly as possible. So it won't be very long, our staff will have a proxy, they'll have their second dose. And we think, and this is all an estimate, of course, we think that about 70% of the people that are in our employ will have opted for the vaccine. So we feel pretty good about that. As Dr. Rowner reminded us today, and of course, we were all following the news and working with the Lincoln Lancaster Health Department, we have to continue to watch numbers. And, you know, the big fear right now is that there's a variant and that, you know, this virus isn't, hasn't gone away. And people's behaviors are going to go a long way toward allowing us to continue to stay in school. And so we're going to be watching those numbers. We've got some student testing that's going to be taking place, I think, tomorrow. And we're doing it with the State Health Department, like we did earlier this, this, actually, over Christmas time, to to determine, you know, what, to what extent are our students carrying any virus. So hopefully, we'll have some data on that. We're very optimistic. We think our our local numbers, meaning our staff numbers and our student numbers, are mirroring what the what the city is experiencing and the county is experiencing. We just do a very good job. And, you know, if you've been in our schools, I know many of you have, you see our kids are really following the protocols very well, and as are staff. So, you know, again, many, many thanks to them. So good news for us really is remote learning. You know, if you remember, we were a little bit over 30% in our peak, and that had to do with a lot of the the fear and uncertainty that the virus represented. And Dr. Larson reported that we're about 14% now and just a little bit under 6,000 students and coming back on a daily basis. So confidence in in the safety of our protocols, we think, is driving that. And, you know, we're excited to get all of our kids back. I mean, we we want all our students back in school. We want them all back in school full time. And I think we're on our way to that. And, you know, again, I want to say thank you to the Lincoln Lancaster Health Department. When the original DHM came out with regard to spring sports, they, we were limited, very limited to, I think originally, they had expressed to us that we, primarily because our outside venues have a lot of athletes and bleachers are really pretty confined, that we limited to one person, one adult, or one parent or sibling per athlete. And of course, you got the emails, we got the emails, you know, parents who were, that was a tough one to explain to them. When we met with the Health Department, they understood that. And since it's an outdoor venue, we we now are limited by capacity and number. And literally, we're gonna have to count people when they come in and count people when they come out. But anybody that wants to attend a spring event should be able to attend a spring event. And, you know, that, so we're excited about that. So other than that, I would say, you know, we are, all systems go. And, you know, hopefully, we came back from spring break with some renewed energy because many of us have had at least one dose of the vaccine. And we'll finish up strong, we'll get into the summer, we'll hope that this, what did I read today, that, you know, the vaccine has to take out the variant, right? So hopefully, we get enough people vaccinated to be able to do that. And then we start school in the fall looking a lot more normal than it's looked this year. So I appreciate all the board's support and the community's support. And I feel like we're, we're under, we're underway. Concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. Questions? All right, we will move on. Now is the time in the agenda where we have public comment. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. After you name your, or say your name, you will be, the timer will start, and you will have five minutes. Our first speaker is Mr. Chad Hoard. And I'll try to warn you when you get down to about your last 30 seconds.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm not a public speaker here, so if I'm a little nervous, please forgive me. Thank you for giving me this, this time to express my concerns with you today. If I get emotional during this discussion, please forgive me. I just care deeply for every, everyone in our community and to ensure that we are doing the right thing for all of them. I, like everyone here today, did not get to choose my characteristics at birth, not my skin color, not my gender, and not my height. There was once a brave, intelligent hero of our country that understood and fought for, fought to ensure the people, sorry, understood, understood this and fought to ensure that people would not be judged for their characteristics and that they would did not, that they did not choose and could not change, but would be judged only on their character, as character is made of our choices. Every year on the third, third Monday of January, we celebrate his very much deserved holiday, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. We should not be letting the terrible actions of a few terrible, or horrible actions of a few terrible people divide, divide us. We need to remain united against all discrimination. The problem in our society is not that we are too colorblind, but the fact that we are not too, or colorblind enough. When I was in school, my teachers believed in the words of Martin Luther King Jr. and ensured that all students, staff, and staff treated people according to their character and not the color of their skin. Our LPS staff and students should not be treating anyone differently because of the color of their skin, and they should be equally punished for any discrimination. I would like to suggest to you that that any LPS staff that have signs showing favoritism for any group according to their skin color or gender, including Black Lives Matter signs, should be disciplined in accordance with the rules of discrimination. I don't think we should have any LPS staff with racial bias, and the Black Lives Matter signs are an obvious display of racial bias. We have people of all races and groups in our, that face discrimination in our country. The increased crime against Asians in our country is just one example of that, and we should be working to end all racism and discrimination and mistreatment of people in our country. Our, our public teachers are essential in the fight against discrimination. They should not be part of the problem. We need to ensure that our students do not feel like their skin color defines them or limits them in the, in the achievement, in their achievements, in the achievement of their dreams. We need to instill in them confidence, optimism for their future. We need to ensure all students are given equal opportunity to succeed in our system, regardless of their skin color. We need to emphasize to our children that no one gets to choose their skin color. And we should not be treated only on our character, we should be treated only on our character and not on our skin color. I would like to read the definition of discrimination to you, and I would have, and I would like to have you answer a question when I am done. Dictionary.com describes discrimination as "an act or instance of discriminating or of making a distinction. Treatment or consideration of or making a distinction in favor of or against a person or thing based on the group, class, or category to which the person or things belong, rather than the individual merit. The power of making fine distinctions, discriminating judgment, something that serves to differentiate." I would like to finish by having you please explain to me how a sign showing a caring for the lives of only one group of people according to their skin color is not an example of discrimination as described in the section where it says, "Treatment or consideration of or making distinction in favor of or against a person or a thing based on the group, class, or category to which that person or thing belongs, rather than the individual merit."
You have 30 seconds?
That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
That's it?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no more blue cards. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. You have before you the Consent Agenda, Human Resource Matters, item 8.1. Routine Business, item 8.2. 8.3 is Option Enrollment Student Applications for 2020, 2021. It's Option Out and Option Enrollment for Students Opting In. Do I have a motion? Don?
Move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Barb?
I said.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent items. Are there any conflict statement? Connie, and then Annie.
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 647888 and 648313 as part of Agenda Item 8.2A. And as to Agenda Item 8.2B, payroll for ratification as to any employee deductions for United Way in the agenda materials for this meeting. I would also add that the Design Services Contract at North Star, I will not be voting for as well. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 647- and hereby abstain from voting on check number 647992 as part of agenda item 8.2. A of the agenda materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
And Ms. Maxwell, would you call the role and those two exceptions?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
All right, we move on to item 9.1 from Board Committees, newly annexed property to the City of Lincoln. That would be Dr. Rowner.
Yes, and Standish, can you describe the property?
Absolutely. This is about two acres of property on 63rd and Arbor Road, so it's up on I-80 corridor. This is related to the Camping World site here in Lincoln. If there were any students on that property, they would be assigned to Norwood Park, Dawes Middle School, and Northeast High School. This will be back for you at your next reading, meeting for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Standish. Show there any questions? All right, move on. And we have been, items 9.2.2, I think we have a whole group here. So Mr. Weeskan, I think we go from 9.2.2 all the way to 9.2.45.
And I apologize for overloading your agenda, but we'll try to make this as prompt as possible. I'd like to start with covering 9.2.1 through 9.2.44. So we're going to cover 44 of those items, if that's possible. Before I jump into those, on your consent agenda tonight, you approved the design services or the professionals for the architects and engineers for Phase Two of the Bond Program. There are six projects on that list. Everett Elementary School, indoor air quality additions at Dawes, additions at Lefler, enhancement projects at Lincoln High and East High, and the addition at North Star. So those six projects, tonight, you approved the design services for those, we'll negotiate those contracts and promptly begin design of those projects in early April. So just so you know what that was all about on your agenda. Diving into these 44 bid scopes, they are all related to the two new high schools. 29 of them are related to both high schools, so they are bid scopes that relate to both buildings because the buildings are identical. 11 of the bid scopes are related to the southeast project, four of the bid scopes are related to the northwest project. They total nearly $38 million. You've already approved the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, for both schools. Both were slightly over $61 million, if you recall. So these all fall within the guaranteed maximum price, an agreement that we've already approved. Collectively, we have a GMP budget when we go into all of these bid openings and so we have a number that we're targeting. About 50% of these were a little bit over that budget, about 50% of these were a little under that budget. If you recall, when we approved the GMP, both buildings had roughly $1 million of contingency built in, right? And the district has $1 million of contingency outside of the two GMP contracts, so that was about $3 million of contingency. Collectively, these 44 bid scopes or contracts that you will approve are under budget by in excess of $400,000. So that adds to the contingency pot, just so you know that. So we're going in the right direction in terms of money being spent. And we've talked about what's the likelihood that that contingency gets spent, or we're going to try not to spend that if we don't have to. So that's where we are with these bid scopes. You've approved a number of other bid scopes before tonight. There were a number of times where we would bring six or eight or 10 to a board meeting and approve those. So this is not the last of these, there will be a handful more, but we're very close to having them all bid. That all being said, this is first reading, we're not asking for you to waive two readings tonight. We would, we're, we're fine by bringing these to the next board meeting in early April and getting approval of all of these at that time. So if we have questions or other things that we need to address, we'll do that. So a couple of questions came up at planning today and I'll try to address some of those and then I'll open it up for questions. One is, some of the low bidders here are Hausmann, and Hausmann is our construction manager at RISK. We have rules in place that if the C M wants to bid certain bid scopes, that they typically might self-perform on other projects. They have to submit their bid 24 hours in advance. So they don't have a leg up on the next bidder, the competitor. They have to put that in. Now, they probably know the project a little more than others because they're on the job site every day, they see the entire drawings, but they have to submit their bid 24 hours in advance. It's not opened publicly because we have to wait till the other bidders submit their bid the following day. Then we open all bids and it just so happens that they were the low bid on these self-performed scopes of work, not uncommon in this industry. Another question came up about the complexity of, and I'm going to use the example of 9.2.27. There's a bid scope there that deals with overhead side folding doors and so projects are broke down into divisions and I don't want to get, make it too complicated, but these divisions cover, one of the divisions covers lots of specialties. And one of the specialties listed in this division is overhead doors, side folding doors, different kinds of doors, no different than the movable partition that's in this room. And every supplier doesn't necessarily carry or sell all of those different types of doors. If I need an overhead door, I go to an overhead door company. If I need a side folding door, I go to a side folding door company. But in the specifications, they're lumped together. So when that bid is out there on the street, we collectively have to look at all of these numbers from different companies to add up to the overall bid package. The one bidder that's listed there that did not get the bid, they may carry two or three of those items, but again, not all of the items. So their collective bid may look low here at $353,000, but they weren't supplying all the parts and pieces that were part of that bid package. They had some things missing which someone else would have had to supply. That someone else could have been two or three of the other bidders that are part of the low, but when you add them together, they would not have been the low bid overall. So this is taking the best of all worlds, combining those bids, and we got the low bid for all those parts and pieces. I hope I didn't confuse that in that statement, but that's the way some of these packages work, because a supplier can't supply everything within that division. Any questions on that?
Don?
In very general terms, how would you characterize the amount of bids or contracts that are going to local businesses?
I would say that, you know, and you can look at the names of these companies here, some are local. Sometimes these suppliers, they're only in Chicago and New Orleans, you know, that's the only place that may make bleachers or theater stage rigging. And so in terms of the labor, in terms of the guts of the building, I would say 80% to 90% is local. Some of these things that get supplied are definitely coming from out of state because we just don't make them here. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we can move on to number 45.
So number 45, the re-roofing at the distribution center is a project that's part of the infrastructure plan from the Bond Program of 2020. So this is a project that's, needs to be done the last few days, have even called more attention to why this needs to be done. This is a project that we would ask if you would allow us to waive the two reading and approve tonight so that we can get, be proactive and get started on this project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that as well.
Is there a motion? Lanny?
I move that we waive second reading and pass item 9.2.45.
Is there a second? Don?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading and approve the bid for the distribution center roofing repair project.
Nothing, I get it. I answered my own question, I was just slow.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the role and the motion?
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other 44 will come back in two weeks for, well, at our next board meeting. Moving on, items for second reading from Board Committees, we have the newly annexed property to the City of Lincoln. That would be Dr. Rowner and Dr. Standish, is there a motion?
Say motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Dr. Rowner, is there a second? Annie?
I second that.
And Dr. Standish?
Yes, this is before you for approval this evening. This is just over 21 acres. It would be in the area of about 90th and Van Dorn where you're seeing lots of residential development. It's currently assigned to Purtle Elementary School, Luxe Middle School, and East High School. So this would be an annexation for your approval.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the role?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. And now we have item 10.2.1, the proposed negotiated agreement with the Lincoln Education Association that is here for second reading and action. I would entertain a motion. Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.1, the proposed negotiated agreement with LEA.
And Barbara?
I second them.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the proposed negotiated agreement with the Lincoln Education Association. Dr. Weber?
Yes, the proposed negotiated agreement was brought before you at the previous board meeting. It represents a 1.53% total package increase. This package also includes all of the increases related to health insurance, state retirement, social security, step movement, as well as some extra standard adjustments. I'd entertain any questions you have, but this is for your approval this evening.
Don?
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, trying to find a way to express my incredible gratitude to the teachers for this most difficult year that they've had. And then going through this negotiations process and agreeing on a very pragmatic package for the district. I'd also like to send a quick shout out to Rita Bennett for her work, which has just been incredible. She's been an incredible advocate for the teachers and incredibly good to work with. I'm so grateful for her work in negotiations this year. Thank you.
Any other questions? And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Duncan, she represented the board on that negotiations for the board. And Rita's back there somewhere hiding.
She switched sides on me.
She switched sides on me. Thank you for all the hard work that you have done and that the teachers do each and every day to make sure our kids learn. With that, Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the role?
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. We have no expedited or emergency items, we have no items removed from the consent agenda. We have informational items from any board committees? Annie?
I would like to say that the Wellness American Civics Multicultural Committee did meet again today. And basically we got an update on how we are doing through the pandemic with a variety of issues, with a voter registration update, which I'm happy to say that they have, continuing that on has been something that has been, been worked upon, but, and they had this big plan and then the pandemic came, so they're going to be doing online voter registration. They're doing kind of a, a campaign for that, which I think is fantastic, as well as some clarification on some of our supplemental sources for our, our American Civics, correct on, plus some updates on our GOPO plan, which will be coming out this spring and talking with teachers about how to, how it's been kind of redefined or reworked, I might say, for, not reworked, it hasn't really been reworked, it's been, broaden, there you go, broadened. Thanks for an impact from the pandemic and it's kind of a silver lining broadening. It'll be a good thing for both teachers and students. And without going into details, and then the last one is that we've been working with the city on getting Heritage School, as known as Heritage School, our one-room school program, working on renaming that, understanding the need to take it back to its historical name of the Cunningham School and working with the city on making that happen and helping that happen, which is a very positive thing too, a good step forward. So my, my heartfelt thanks to all of our social studies teachers out there. It's been kind of an interesting year to be a social studies teacher, a relatively hard year to be a social studies teacher, a lot of things and issues to deal with the kids and I, and I want to thank Jackie for leading the way and doing a good, good job this year.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, are there any other board committee reports? All right, moving on, we have a report from the Career Academy.
We do not.
Moving on from the superintendent, do we have a superintendent update?
Yeah, and I, I'll be brief. We have a lot to be thankful for and certainly the, as Mr. Mayhew mentioned, and I know all board members feel, the, the package that we're able to negotiate in a difficult budget climate is, we're very, very grateful and have a wonderful relationship with LEA and with Rita Bennett. We acknowledge the board's work a couple of weeks ago, just as part of National Board Recognition Week and for your dedication, your commitment to all the work that we've done this year. You know, we're very, very thankful for all of our staff members and very thankful for, as we've talked a few times with regard to our custodians and our transportation and our maintenance people. This is a tough winter too, right? And, you know, fortunately, the last big snow, two snowstorms stayed in Colorado and didn't make their way to Nebraska, but it's been a challenging winter. We're also very thankful for our local media and in particular for the work of Margaret Reest with the Lincoln Journal-Star. And I don't know if board members are aware of this or not, and Margaret certainly doesn't know this other than the fact that she saw a few knickknacks at her table, but Margaret's going to be leaving the education beat fairly soon and taking on a new challenge at the Lincoln Journal-Star. And of course, we certainly wish her the very, very best, but I want to just personally say thank you for the great work that you've done representing the newspaper, but also being the beat reporter for education. And those of you that know Margaret, and I think everybody on this board knows Margaret, she really does her work in a very, very professional way, asks a lot of questions and is a very, very fair reporter. And so Margaret, while we're going to miss you immensely, we just want to say thank you for a job well done and we wish you the very, very best in your new journey. So let's recognize Margaret, this is probably her last name. She's probably back there saying, not very many reporters get clapped for when they read a certain beat. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joel. You have before you the monthly financial report. Are there any questions or concerns about the monthly financial report? Seeing none, announcements of the upcoming events for the board. Tomorrow, March 23rd, we have the Greater Nebraska School Association meeting that is being held by Zoom. We have April 7th, the board work session at 4:00 PM, and April 13th, we have the Career Academy joint board meeting at 8:00 AM and the next board meeting at 6:00 PM here at LPSDO. I do have a request for, oh, go to closed, or public comment, sorry. Now is the time, second time for a public comment. I do have a card from Ms. Rita Bennett, but she wants to go last, so is there anybody else that wants to sneak in front of her? All right, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you so much. My name is Rita Bennett, I'm currently serving as president of the Lincoln Education Association. And in a rather perfect metaphor for this school year, as all teachers have experienced all year long, when technology fails us, we go to Plan B. And since I was unable to print some notes for myself earlier, I just had to bring my whole laptop up here. But we certainly do know that's what teachers have experienced all year long with the adjustments they've had to make, so I, I hope you'll indulge me for glancing at this once in a while. I do want to extend my thanks to you, to the Board of Education for approving the professional agreement between LEA and LPS for 2122. This agreement reached through our negotiations process This agreement reached through our negotiations process does represent the collaborative effort that was needed to reflect both a significant financial shortfall with the reduction of state aid dollars that the district is grappling with, along with some adjustments in duty days and contract language in ways that will help address the needs of teachers as well. It certainly wasn't an easy time during which to negotiate, as we've acknowledged, given those financial circumstances. And it was made more challenging, as we all acknowledged together, that we, as we worked on it, that teachers have had to this year work harder than ever to meet the needs of multiple audiences while delivering instruction all at the same time to all of them. And of course, we know they've done that in the midst of keeping themselves and their students safe during the pandemic. We do look forward to implementing the new agreement and to finding additional ways we can continue to honor teachers' voices and their work. And certainly, a district that makes a meaningful place at the table for those who are on the front lines each day remains really important, I think, to the success of our district. And the Lincoln Education Association remains really glad to partner with you in recognizing that hard work and those incredible things that happen in our classroom every day. And finally, on a personal note, I will add that in this, my thirtieth year in Lincoln Public Schools, I have now completed my final contract negotiations as LEA president. And I will be completing my second and final term of office at the end of May. And I just wanted to add that it's an honor and a privilege to work for and with educators across the district every day and to work to represent them. And it certainly would be far more difficult work to do if it weren't for the continued collaboration that we have between LEA and LPS. And I am grateful, that doesn't mean we always agree, of course, but what it does mean is that we can still come together and work for common purposes of keeping our district a great one. And I'm really grateful that everyone remains committed to continuing that work. And I do believe our district really is stronger because of it. And I should add as my really final note here, that after I depart, should all that fall apart, there's always the public comment section of every school board meeting, so I'll be back to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. And seeing no one else for public comment, I do have a request for closed sessions for item six personnel and item seven legal advice. Is there a motion? Lanny?
Move that the board go in the closed session for items six and seven.
Thank you. Is there a second? Annie?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into closed session following the close of this meeting for item six personnel and item seven legal advice. Ms. Maxwell, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. This meeting will be recessed, and we will adjourn following the closed session.